Hello and welcome to our second installment of our live stream. We've got a lot to talk about tonight. And I know you've got a lot of questions. So if you are, if you have questions and you're wondering about stuff, we're here as long as you have questions. I'm here to answer your questions and have a special guest tonight. Teresa Hendricks is our Lewisburg Board Member. And we, if you have questions for her, please feel free to email in. Darren Waldo is where you'll send those. And I know his email address is up on the screen at this time. But send those questions there and I promise you, we're going to get them answered. If you sent me emails or you sent Coach Waldo emails since our last live stream last Monday, I'm going to answer those emails today, tonight. The other thing is we are going to change how we're going to do open house. We had a lot of you phone in yet last, or email in on our last live streaming and was wanting to information on open house and sort of wanted us to do something a little more personable than the virtual open house. And so we listened and we made some adjustments. And so we're going to announce those tonight as well, how we'll do open house. But let's first, let's just start with Ms. Hendricks here. And so we've had, we've had a big decision to make. And I know a lot of people were really interested in, in this decision. There's a lot at stake for our kids and for our community. And I know it was a long process. So from a board standpoint, I know you all were looking at numbers and talking and that kind of stuff. Just take us in the process and take us to where, how you came to the decision that you did last night.
Okay. Well, obviously, I mean, we all wanted to do, first of all, what was best for our children and our students. We took under consideration on our staff, our teachers, our bus drivers, parents. We just tried to look at the overall, you know, everybody. And I am a parent of a student too. So I had to look at it as a board member and a parent. So, you know, we had to look at it as through everybody's eyes. Mr. Mullins and the whole board, I mean, everybody has been wonderful about, he's keeping us very informative on everything. Sharing things that he has learned and what he maybe would suggest. And we would talk about it and try to come up with the best solution. And we've all gotten along very well. I mean, I couldn't ask for a better team. And I can tell even talking with you, you have kept me up to date, you and Kristy, Ms. Lucas. And I can just tell everybody in the whole county, we've had emails from teachers, aides, all staff, parents. We've tried to look at everything possible, you know, and take that under consideration.
And you know, there's not, there's not a district in the state of Kentucky that has gone back full in person. Some of them have gone to a hybrid model. So as we're looking at our hybrid model, we're going to start on the 26th. And we're going to start everybody on virtual on the 26th. And then, and then we're going to transition to a hybrid model on the 9th. What are the advantages that you see with us starting virtually for a few weeks? And then transitioning into a hybrid model? Because we understand, I think we all understand the burden that it puts on the community. But we also had to balance that against the risk that we're putting our students under or, or our staff and those. So we have to try to balance that. So we understand both sides of that. So give us some advantages that you see in us transitioning from this, giving us a couple of weeks to make this transition.
We've, you know, I've had people, you know, we've had people, you know, that have wanted to go virtual. We've had some that wanted to go as soon as we could. I've had mixed feelings, one day I'm one way, one day I'm another. It's just a big decision. And I feel like what I have felt, everybody has felt. Virtual, I mean, you know, we are still in a red zone. Me myself, I mean, I, you know, I'm thinking of these kids, these students. I just, you know, we just felt like going virtual for the first two weeks, especially while we're in that 10% red zone. We needed to maybe wait a couple of weeks. Go virtual for the first two weeks. That way the kids, you know, they don't get behind. We can go ahead and start. I am all about getting these kids back in a routine, getting them back, you know, into their social life. They need it. They need sports. They need, you know, they need all these things to keep these kids going. That's just part of life. Parents need it too.
Yep.
Teachers, I can tell, I feel like a lot of the teachers are wanting to come back.
They do.
And, you know, we just felt like giving everyone those two weeks, especially your teachers, to get prepared for the hybrid. You know, you know, and going two days a week for Team A, Team B, and then the last Friday, I feel like will help for those students that are going virtual. You know, to get caught up on with their teacher on Friday. That way those teachers can, can help everybody.
Yep.
You know, we didn't know for sure about the first two weeks until right at the very end. And that was kind of like when we entered into that red zone and that kind of changed our mind across the board.
Yeah.
So, you know, we are looking at the health of our students and their families and, and all of our staff. So I, we just could not do it that first two weeks.
Yeah.
And, you know, for the weeks to come, we don't know, you know, what, you know, what's going to tell us in the next few weeks either. This may be an ongoing thing for the rest of the year. And I just hope everyone is patient and understands that, you know, what we are, you know, having to look at. And I feel like they do.
Yeah, you know, I can tell you that our parents have been absolutely great through this process. We've, we've done, we have tried our very best to keep everyone abreast of what's going on. That our community, the one thing that I don't want people to do is have to wonder about what was going on or, or that they don't understand why a decision was made, you know, and those kinds of things. And so we want to, we want to be upfront and I, but our parents have been great. And they've given us a lot of support. And I think we're all in this together. We all have the same goal. We want the students back in school and, but we want to do it in a safe way. And we have, every decision we make is, is based on that student and the health of our staff and all that too. But we're really, we love our students and we want them to be in the best. And, you know, the one thing that, that going, the two weeks of virtual, one thing that it does is, is you know that Bowling Green and Warren County are starting their school and Baron, gives us an opportunity to kind of see how things are going there as well. So that's just another advantage and kind of you learn from anything that someone does. And, and so that's a good thing. And the other thing is, is it keeps us on our school schedule. So there's no chance of taking a fall break or a spring break or having to go all the way into June with school. And, and I'm sure that weighed on, on your mind as well as keeping that school calendar where we could still have those breaks.
Right. And also back to, you know, the hybrid, we did take that under consideration right here toward the end. Because, you know, these students, you know, they won't be in a class with 25 kids.
Yeah.
They will, it will be maybe 11 or 12, you know, you can correct me, I'm not sure exactly how many is in a room. But, you know, that's also going to take a lot of pressure off of the staff, the teachers. Because when you've got 25 in a room, I mean, how can you possibly, it's just going to be so much, you know, to manage. So I really think, you know, that'll work. And we're not, I mean, we're not looking, hopefully it won't be long term, but we don't know, you know.
Well, we're, we're going to talk about tonight, some of the advantages that we see of the hybrid and kind of how we're going to do the hybrid. And, and we're going to talk about even the support that we're giving the virtual students. And, and right now, we've, all of us, not just the Virtual Academy, but the actual, what we're calling extended school closure. We're, we're in both things. So, so we're both learning digitally. So we've got a lot of, of things to talk about tonight. So let's, let's go ahead and head to the questions. I know there's a lot of them. I think we had about 25 or 30 before we started, so.
If you were forced to do virtual learning, I have some concerns. My children's father and I share custody 50/50. He does not have. We both work full-time day shift and depend on either a babysitter or an older family member to help watch them during school breaks. I do not feel like schoolwork should be on our family and should be helped by us as the parents. Will virtual learning be an option to do during afternoon and weekend time? Or do they have to do the work during school hours?
Yeah, that's really a very valid concern. And we've heard that, we've heard that many times as well. So a couple of things that we've done, and I know we've had this, we had a similar question the last, the last live stream. I can tell you some of the things that we have done, we have, we, the weekly work is not due until Sunday at 3 o'clock. So we're giving that working parent that, that weekend to, to have that. We will also be having what we're calling for our extended out of school closure kids, learning communities and for our Virtual Academy learning pods. And that is, as I've explained before, where we can get 10 or less students together. We're going to have a teacher available. And so they're going to be able to actually work with a teacher, ask questions, those kinds of things that, that are going to lend themselves to supporting that student. So we're putting those in place. We're also going to be offering Saturday school. So from nine to 12, two Saturdays a month, when, when it's appropriate. Sometimes because of breaks and stuff, it'll only be one Saturday a month. But we'll be offering Saturday school to where students can come and get help and, and have access to the internet and all that kind of stuff. So we're trying to put some safeguards in place to ensure that we are doing the things that we need to do to support that student. We understand working families. And, and we want to take that and, and help. We want to be a support. We have to be a team in terms of educating these students. And more than ever, we have to be a unit and a team. And so we want to be there to, to support. The, the students have to do the work. We have to do the work. And we have to keep the students on pace. But we're hoping it's engaging work and we want project-based learning and giving kids choices on how they share their learning. So we're hopeful it's engaging, but we are going to have an awful lot of support there for that student. And I will say that on our Virtual Academy students, we are actually assigning teachers to the Virtual Academy. So those teachers are going to be able to help students throughout the day. So if you're at a babysitter and you run into a problem, you can call the school during the day and we will get you with a teacher that's going to help you. So we, we've got that kind of stuff set up. Like I said, some safety nets in place to make sure that we can help you.
With a virtual start, I believe you said that those signed up for in-person will need to come in during a set time to do an iReady placement test. When will those times be? Will there be enough space to safely social distance all the students during the test?
Yeah.
Then there's a little bit more, but answer that part first.
Okay. All right. Yeah. So we had a little glitch with iReady. Those dates were supposed to be this week and you were going to bring them in and, and we were going to get them tested. And, and so we had a little glitch with that. We are working with iReady. We're getting that, that problem solved. And we'll be ready up and running here very, very soon. And by the end of this week, we'll be up and running. Ms. Lucas is going to be in contact with every student that signed up for the Virtual Academy. And with that phone call, there are several things we're going to cover. One, are you interested in a learning pod? Because if you are, we want to help put a learning pod together and we want to get a time and a place so that we can send a teacher. Number two, she's going to set up a time for you to be able to, to come in and test. So we're actually going to make an appointment. You're going to come in. That way we can limit the numbers. We can make sure that there's good safety in spacing and it'll be a little more convenient for you. So those are a couple of things that she's going to be talking about during these, the phone calls. The phone calls will start on Monday. So if you see our number, that's what it's all about. So if you're a part of the Virtual Academy, please answer that call so that we can, so that we can start to, to get things organized and get you the support you need.
Okay. All of that was awesome, but this question was about in-person. Those students that had signed up for in-person. So it's technically the extended out of school students doing the placement test.
I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry.
But all that was important. I'm glad you said it.
All right. So the in-person students, our teachers will start calling tomorrow by governor's recommendation.
Ms. Harris has been calling today.
Oh, they did say call it, yeah.
She's been slotting kids for eighth grade.
Ms. Stowall?
I know Ms. Harris has been calling because people have called back.
It was eighth grade. Yeah. They had texted me and asked me today and I said, yes, I forgot. Thank you for reminding me. So anyway, they will, they will call. Some of them already called. Your eighth grade has called today, but, but you'll get some more phone calls tomorrow, seventh and eighth. And we're working our way down. So what we're trying to do is we're going to put together learning communities by the governor's recommendation. He is allowing 15% of the student population to be on campus for small group instruction. And, and so we're going to take advantage of that. And we're going to put little communities together, eight, maybe little, little communities of eight to 10. It has to be less than 10. And they're going to, they're going to come in, they're going to be able to work once a week with a teacher for two hours. And we're going to do some intervention. But during that time, the very first time they come, they're going to test at that time. So as long as you sign up for a learning community time, and that time will stay exactly the same for as long as we stay virtual. And it will, you will stay with your same group as long as we stay virtual. And the very first time, we'll, we'll take our placement tests. And then the next time, it'll be all about helping them stay on track, helping them with new learning, any kind of interventions that we see where the kid, the student needs a little extra help in, in math or reading. We're going to give them during that time. But they'll have two hours with their teachers once a week. So you're getting a phone call, you will get a phone call. If you haven't got one by Friday of next week, then you, you need to let me know. But, but I, I promise you, we're, we're getting those done. We're starting with the eighth grade. We're working our way down to preschool.
And whenever, do you want to explain that whenever the eighth grade parents call, or the eighth grade teacher?
Yeah, the household.
You mean households?
Yeah, yeah. So we understand that you have a household. So you may have a sixth grade student, a third grade student, a first grade student. So when that eighth grade teacher calls or seventh grade, whatever, when they get there, they see that you've got two other students, one's in the first grade, third grade and sixth grade. They, they, they see that. So they will slot your sixth grader a time. They also will, at that same time, slot the time for your third grader and your first grader. So all of your household kids, all the students can come at the same time and they will work with their grade level teacher. That way you're not having to come two or three times to the school.
Same question. We have several devices at home. Is there a certain device that the programs you've talked about work best on? And how will my child access them?
Yeah, that's a great question. The best, you know, certainly laptops are awesome. Any kind of desktop you have is great. But if you go, you know, to Walmart and you buy a Chromebook, you can access any program that we have on that. It's wonderful. And our district has done a great thing. They have purchased Clever, which is a program that will, the, the student will log on using their email address. And then all the programs that we're using are in that spot. They just click on the program they want to use. It logs them in and they're ready to go. So there's no more clicking in 100 different places to find programs. Everything's right there in one spot. So that's pretty, that's pretty handy.
Even though my son will be virtual, at least this semester, I would still like to know more about how car riders will need to use the app to drop off their children. I work full-time, so I rely on grandparents to drop off and pick up my son. One of them does not have a smartphone. How would they let someone know they are parked and ready for someone to come take my son's temperature and walk him to the building? He's in kindergarten.
Yeah. So we're going to be putting out some YouTube videos here very soon. The entire district is going to each school. That kind of talks about the different things that are happening, you know, in terms of procedures and that kind of thing. We will put out a video specifically for school dismissal manager because it's, there's a learning curve for everyone. In the afternoons, whenever you're getting in line for car ride or pickup, we will have somebody out there and they will put your number in if you don't have a smartphone or, and you can't, you don't have a QR code reader or whatever. Kelly Lewis will be out there. She'll put your number in. If you have a grandparent that doesn't have a smartphone, can't use the app, don't worry about it. Pull up to a drop zone, call the front office, let them know that you don't have the app. And, and then we will make arrangements for that. But if there's any way possible, please learn how to use the app. We're going to do everything we can to teach you how to use the app. So that it's, it's, it's great record-keeping. It, it really helps us keep things organized and keep, make sure that the students are safe. Meaning that, that they're going with the right person, they're picked up with the right person, they're on the bus. If they're supposed to be on the bus, they're in cars, they're supposed to be in the car rider line. It's just a really good, safe way for us to make sure that those students get where they need to go. So we're going to help with that. But, you know, also if there's any way that you can, can, can use it, please do. If not, we're going to understand and we certainly will, will help you in that situation.
I have a question regarding the learning options with the possible delay of in-school start date. Theoretically, I want my son to be in-person as soon as it is safe, but I have signed him up for Virtual Academy to begin the year. When the time comes to have him back in school, will he be on the same page as the rest of the class? Will all the kids on virtual, well, I'm sorry. Will all the kids be on virtual if school is delayed to keep them at an easier transition for when they come back in person? I know this is a hard answer to give, but I know as a district, there must be so many ideas being thrown around with the governor's announcement this week. It just seems like with so many different options and levels of what is going on for kids. And to be honest, the teachers and staff as well.
Yeah. So I think right now I want to ask, ask Teresa a question. As a board member, and, and I know Mr. Mullins, you all are doing a lot of, you're looking at a lot of different things and to determine whether face-to-face is going to happen on, on September the 9th. So take us in just a little bit of some of the metrics, some of the things you're looking at, some of the considerations you're making whenever you're looking this next two weeks and whether we'll, we'll actually go back on the 9th and, and that kind of stuff.
Well, we'll be, we'll be seeing, I know we are keeping a check every day, you know, to see what the totals are. And if they're going up and if, you know, if the percentage goes up, you know, we're going to have to, we may have to make some changes there. And we feel like everybody knows that. And I feel like parents will be taking that under consideration too. You know, if it starts, if the totals start going up, they may, they may start out hybrid and then they may go back virtual. You know, I don't know. But we're looking at those mainly, probably that's the main thing will be.
That's the big thing.
That's the big thing. And how well is it working, you know, you know, everywhere?
Right, right. The positivity rates are so, I know you all look at those.
We want to be so positive over all of it. We want everything to work.
Right.
It's just the uncertainty that everybody has.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, when the positivity rate is over 10%, it's just really hard, you know? And we talked about that. Now, I know that you said last night in the board meeting and several of you talked about was that, that parents do have the option now to change their mind now that they see that. And I know Mr. Mullins brought that up. We want parents to, if they're uncomfortable or they feel like, hey, the hybrid's great, I was virtual, I want to come hybrid.
Right.
Do it. And if you're, if you're hybrid and, or if you were in-person and you're, I don't know, you want to be virtual, we'll switch you to the Virtual Academy.
I mean, we are trying to, you know, we want to work with everybody in every situation because there is so many different scenarios that's out there. I mean, we know, we know the concerns of our community and our county. And we are going to try our best to accommodate them. You may not always like maybe everything that we decide, but, you know, always remember that we are trying to look at the student and look at everybody involved.
Absolutely. So I know the question, one of the question, part of that question, you may have to read the rest of some other parts of it because it has been a really long month and I am, you know, I forget a little bit. Today I forgot how to do an all-call.
Okay. Can I, you want me to re-read it?
Are you going to go now? Well, can I answer like the end of it? Are you trying to set me up for failure here? Are you trying to set me up for failure here, or is this, you want me to end the?
That's my goal. Go ahead.
Let me answer the end of it, and then you, you give me the first part if I don't. So one of the questions is, are, if I'm virtual, am I gonna be at the same place as an in-person kid when I come back? And, and the, the, it's kind of a hard, is, 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 it's kind of complicated in some ways, but the, 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 the short answer is not exactly. Because an in-person student, uh, there is, there's, as, as a teacher is teaching, uh, they are constantly checking for understanding. And if the student is not understanding, then there's a lot of times that we will go back, and we will reteach something, or we'll go a little deeper. And sometimes an in-person, just because of the nature of kind of how things are set up, when you're in-person, we can go a little deeper in some of the projects, or some of the hands-on activities, that you simply are, there's a barrier whenever you're doing a digital learning platform. It's, it's just the way it is. So it is very possible that the digital student might be ahead of maybe where the in-person student is, but at the end of the whole thing, both of them will have learned the power standards, both, both of them will have learned the curriculum that's outlined by the Kentucky Department of Education. So we will end, uh, at a very similar spot. But at any point in time during the year, uh, they could be a little different. That doesn't preclude us from taking a virtual student and bringing them back in-person. Some of it might be reviewed for them, but there's no problem with that. And if they are slightly off a little bit, we certainly have interventions in place, as, as most of you know, that are very intense, and we do them daily, so we can get kids caught up. Um, and, and so I wouldn't worry about that, but to answer your question and say that they're both gonna be at the same place at the exact same time, we, we don't want to do that, because we want to give our teachers the flexibility they need to, to service each and every child, and to meet that child where they are at, at that particular time. So we're giving our, our, our teachers that flexibility. So the short answer is, that was a long answer, it's, it's a short answer that I make a long answer, I do that, uh, sometimes, but they, um, but, but that's, that's, uh, that's it. We, we won't be at exactly the same place.
Okay, you technically answered all of those questions. Um, would you like to, uh, tell people how they can change their learning option if they want to switch from in-person to virtual, or virtual back to in-person because of the hybrid option that's coming, that's gonna be so great? Because they may not know who they need to contact.
Yeah, we, yeah, that's a, that's a great point, Ms. Lucas. Um, that's your second great point of the day, by the way. I just want to kind of tell the whole world out there, you had two really good ones today. Yes, this is pretty, pretty awesome. Uh, but, um, you need to contact Kelly Lewis, and you can call up here, uh, she's our guidance counselor, contact Kelly. Yeah, uh, her email, uh, Coach Waldo is her email on the screen. There, no, uh, Kelly Lewis. Okay, so we're gonna have Kelly Lewis's, uh, email on the screen. We got a great producer, Darren Waldo, back behind, behind the cameras, he's, he's making all this come to life, but, but we'll have her on the screen. Call us, email us, if you want to change, we'll get that changed, no problem.
Okay, will siblings be paired to go on the same days when the hybrid, hybrid schedule starts?
Yes, absolutely. We've worked very hard. Kelly Lewis, Darlene Anderson have worked tirelessly to ensure that the households are together, that you all will either be all the people on that household are As or Bs. And we've even taken into consideration sometimes who has to pick up the children. So, uh, it is, they have been fabulous in doing that. And we will release that AB schedule here very, very soon. Uh, that will, that will happen within the next, uh, first of next week. We will, we will, uh, by at least Monday or Tuesday, we will have that, that schedule released, so that any kind of, uh, babysitting or, or childcare arrangements can be made.
Will all students need to pick up a Chromebook for hybrid learning? If so, what dates can they be picked up?
Please, if you, uh, if you don't, first of all, the dates are the 24th and 25th, and we are going to, to make it really, uh, uh, an easy process.
Times?
Uh, eight till, nine to six. And so you'll, you'll have, um, you'll have from nine to six o'clock, uh, to come pick up that Chromebook. But do not, please, 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 if you don't have a need, if you already have a Chromebook at home, you have a computer at home, please do not come get a Chromebook. We have a very limited number. We have to keep some here, because when we go hybrid, we have to have them here, and we can't have students transport them back and forth. So please, uh, if you don't need them, don't come get one. But if you do, please come get one, if you have a need. But, um, but if you don't, please, please leave those for those that really do have that need.
This might be a great opportunity to explain who needs to come, and how they can check that out, what the process is, has to be guardian and?
Yeah, so it's really important, we will not check the Chromebook out to anyone who is, is, is not the guardian. Uh, there are two contracts, there's a Lewisburg contract that must be signed, and there's a Logan County District contract that must be signed, but it has to be signed by the guardian. So if there's an uncle, or an aunt, or a grandparent, and that child, that's not the guardian, or a friend down the street, we will not check out that Chromebook. It has to be a guardian. From nine to six on the 24th, 25th, come see us, and we'll get you, we'll get you hooked up.
Uh, what will the kindergarten virtual curriculum look like?
It's going to be a little different. Uh, honestly, it'll be a little different than our, than, than our, our older students. Um, they'll be, the, the teachers, every morning, will be doing a welcome and a morning routine to get our little ones started off on the right foot, foot every morning. Um, and we will do a lot of, a lot of, of, of using what their environment, what they have at home, to demonstrate learning, and to show us their learning, and to, to create projects and those kind of things. Uh, so that'll be a part of it. There'll be some, there'll be a little more paper used, a little more, we're not, you know, we're, we're gonna try to stay away from a lot of worksheets, but there'll be some practice sheets that they'll need to do. But we will work them through the curriculum, just as we would if they were here, and, uh, we will, we will cover basically the same things. We will, we will focus on our power standards, or our priority standards, and, uh, we will ensure that they meet the, the, uh, the, will, the, meet the bar for the Kentucky Department of Education in terms of, of the curriculum that we deliver.
Will it be expected that kindergarten has as long a workday as the other students?
Yeah, no, no. Uh, this, this is the thing, and that's the, I, I, I want everyone to understand that, you know, there, this is, this is gonna be different than last year, and I've said that many times, and there is gonna be rigor to it, and, and we are gonna use the work as a determining factor. We have to have evidence that that student is, is ready to go to the next step of their education. And so this is the only way that we can do that. But, um, but we also are gonna make all curriculum, whether it be kindergarten or eighth grade, we're gonna do our very, very best, and our teachers are working very hard, to ensure that it's engaging curriculum. So if you're asking, is a kindergarten student gonna be online for hours at a time? Absolutely not. Uh, they're gonna have some online work, because they're gonna have a personalized learning platform as well through iReady, and they need to have that. Uh, but, uh, also, we're gonna do a lot of project-based, there's, there's a lot of, uh, where we're gonna ask students to go into the kitchen and find certain, uh, things that represent the learning that they've had that day, or, or, or those type of fun activities. So the student might be working on schoolwork, but they're having fun doing it. And, uh, so, so no, we're not gonna ask them to sit at a table and fill out sheets and, and, and sit at a computer for two, three hours a day, uh, especially our little ones, but we're not really asking that of anybody. We don't want that. It, it's certainly, the time goes up as you get older. Um, and, and we ask a little more of you as you get into higher, but, but all the way through the school, we're really wanting to deliver the digital content in a different way, and, and we're working really hard, and, and we're hopeful that, that, uh, that you see those, the, the, uh, you see those efforts.
After they return to school on the AB schedule, will students still have until Sunday to turn in virtual work?
That's a great question. Uh, so I think what you're asking is, you have, uh, there, let's say your student is on an A schedule, so they're coming on Monday, okay? They will have work that they'll need to complete on Tuesday to get ready for Wednesday's class. So they'll complete work on Tuesday, uh, and it may simply be a video, or it may be pictures of something, or working on their project. But they'll need to do that to be prepared for Wednesday's class. And then they'll have Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then when they get to school on Monday, uh, they would, they would need to have their work done for their teacher. So that would be, it'd be, it's more like a, like you would in a regular class. It's, it's Friday, I assign you work, it's due on Monday. Well, this is, I'm Wednesday, I've assigned you work, it's due on Monday. So you'll have that, that, that time and that weekend to get that done, but, but the teachers will probably, uh, and then, you know, depending on if it's a project, it could be a two-week project, so it might not be this Monday, it might be next Monday. But, uh, but, but it would be due, you know, when they came back to school.
Can I get a packet for my son with special needs, because there is no way he's gonna sit in front of a computer and learn anything?
Yeah, so Ms., uh, uh, Ms. Kennedy, uh, who is, who is, uh, the teacher in the MSD, is putting together a virtual, uh, program for all of our special needs kids, and it's really specific to that student. And we're, we're, we have goals, and we're working on those goals, but we're gonna work on them in a fun way, around the house, and different things, and, and they'll upload, you know, your video, and maybe you'll upload something that, that, that they were doing, you know, uh, that's part of their goals. And she's just got a really cool, uh, curriculum laid out for them, that we are moving them forward in the goals that we've outlined in that IEP. So she'll be getting with you very, very soon, I promise you, and, and she'll be, uh, she'll be kind of helping you go through that.
Can we request whether our kids are an A or a B?
We have done, we, we've, uh, for the most part, we're, we're very close to being done with the AB schedule. Whenever we change the A and the Bs, uh, that could change a lot of things. So that could change a bunch of stuff. It could even change, if you have somebody in the high school, the numbers in the high school. And we have to keep our numbers very close. So let's say the As have 17 that are coming on Monday, Wednesdays, the Bs have 18 or 19. We can't get those numbers to where we have 25 coming and three. So we have to keep that. So there's a lot to this, and there's a lot of considerations. It will be very hard for us to match any requests, uh, and, and to, to grant that. However, if there are some very extenuating circumstances with some documentation, and there is a extenuating circumstance, we are going to work with you. As I said to begin, we have to be partners, we have to, we have to unite. If we've never united before, we gotta unite now. We gotta be partners, or these kids are not gonna move forward. So we're gonna work with you, and we want to work with you. But, uh, but if we just have an overabundance of requests, we just can't. Uh, that, it just is impossible for us to do that. But if there's a real extenuating circumstance or a hardship, um, we would consider that. And that really needs to be sent to me, and with the documentation, because I would be the only one, the principal's the only one that can prove that change.
Thank you. I know this is really not your department, but wanted this addressed, or an answer, if this is truly what is happening before the start of school. I've been told that the bus driver must allow a student to board the bus in the morning, even if the child is running a fever, and the child must sit in the front of the bus until they get to school. I also have been told that the buses will load from rear to front, so you could have a kindergarten child riding right next to a high school-aged student. This also means that every healthy child will be having to walk by the sick children. If a sick child is allowed to board the bus, how is that helping prevent the spread of anything? I understand the process that school is taking to handle sick children, but I have yet to see the transportation side, and how the transportation department is handling the bus routes and sick children, and if they are truly letting them board the bus sick. I do understand that many kids are left at the bus stop and may not have supervision to just leave them at home, or refuse them on the bus. Will the bus drivers be taking temps before the child boards the bus in the afternoon? And I think they also mean the morning. The morning route is not as much an issue for this family, since their child will be a car rider in the mornings, but he does ride the bus in the afternoon.
Yeah. So let me answer what I can, and, uh, some of the, some of the questions in terms of how the bus drivers, are they gonna be taking temperatures or not, need to be, uh, to given, sent to David Ward, D-A-V-I-D dot Ward, W-A-R-D, at Logan dot K-Y schools with an S dot U-S. Uh, those, those, some of that needs to be sent to there. I will tell you what I know. I know that by law, if a student is at the bus stop, even if they're running a fever, we have to let them on the bus. When they get to school, we can isolate and call home, but we cannot pull off, uh, from, from that bus stop. The thing that I, uh, also understand is that because we're doing a hybrid schedule, you want to know about an advantage of a hybrid schedule? It's busing and transportation, huge advantage to a hybrid schedule, because now we can really, really spread those students out on the bus. So we will get that six-foot distancing, and all students will be required to wear a mask. Uh, I will, you know, I, something that stuck out to me today, I was reading in, uh, on, online, a news, news, uh, story online, they just did a, a research project of about 200 people, and they have found out that on airlines, even when there is an infected person on the airplane, that the likelihood of you getting the coronavirus is very, very low, very low. And so, uh, they just published this, this, uh, research article actually today, and very, very, uh, current, uh, deal. So, uh, so to say that, to say that if we're getting everybody on the bus in masks, we're distancing people, we're loading and unloading the bus properly, where you're not having to walk in front of, of other children and that stuff, the, uh, we, I feel like that we can, uh, maintain, uh, a really good, uh, atmosphere there, that, that's, that's not gonna promote the, the, uh, spread of the virus. So those are the things I know. I, I, as far as whether the, the, um, bus driver are gonna take temperatures, it is my understanding that they, that they are, but we're gonna recheck them whenever they get here. Uh, but, but I could be totally wrong on that. That's really a question that, in, in terms of, of how they're gonna do that, is really a question for the trans, transportation director. But I do know by law, we have to, we have to get them. I know there's precautions in place, I know he's worked on this. So I know that there's precautions in place, uh, but, um, but, but that, that's really all I can answer on that. I, I don't, there's, there are certain things about transportation that we just don't, as you say, as, as the question said, I just, I don't, I don't handle that part of it.
Um, I have a kindergarten student.
You can, hold on just a second, Ms.
I was gonna say, you may want to discuss, or let them know how you're gonna, like, your isolation plan.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, that's good. Um, one of the things that we're gonna do here at our school, part of our safety plan, is to make sure that we have an isolation room. So we want students that have a fever, uh, or, or, and not just a fever, I, I want people to understand that if you look at the research, in students, the ages that we're dealing with, about only 56% show a fever. So they only show a temperature, that's just one of the things. But higher percentage show, you know, uh, gastro issues, or, um, uh, you know, could be, uh, some fatigue, there could be some other, so, so we're looking for other symptoms as well. But if we have a student that, that's demonstrating that, and not, that, you know, uh, we, we have an isolation room, so basically what we'll do is we'll take them to a comfortable spot, we'll call the parent, uh, and we'll have supervision there, but, but the supervision doesn't have to go right in the room with them. So we're protecting our staff, and we're, we're protecting the student, student can lay down, they can rest, uh, and, and they just, you know, they can kind of, kind of, uh, just take it easy until the, until our, one of the parents or guardians arrives. So we are, we, we are not gonna allow them to just be out and about, and we're not and we're not going to put them in an area that is highly, a highly trafficked area. We're going to put them in a spot that they'll get to rest, and, and we'll protect the spread that away. Are we, do we have any more questions, or do I need to wrap it up?
I was trying to figure out where I was. I have a kindergarten student, will be there some type of orientation before school starts?
Hey, that, yeah, so I can take that question now, right? I'm going to release how we're going to do open house, how about that? Well, may, wait, do you have a, do you have like something on there with breaking news? Or do I get like a, can I get like a, like a drum roll or anything? Is there any kind of big announcement, something? Can you zoom the camera in? Okay, I'll just do it this way then. All right, we are going to have our, we're going to do open house different. So on the very first day of school, the twenty-sixth, we feel like that we want to have a welcome-to-school party. And so we're going to kick this thing off the right way. And we're going to invite you, every, every grade level have a time. We have to watch the numbers we have on campus, but every grade level have a time. You'll come in your car. I can't, can't allow you to get out of your car, your student can come with you. I can't allow them to get out of the car. But then we are going to have our teachers, they'll come out, and they'll, they'll go through their open house. They'll talk about expectations and all the fun things and that kind of stuff. We might even have a special little treat for, for the, the students and that kind of stuff. You will be able to fill out some paperwork, like our T code, different things, bus. So I've had the question, what, how do you know where my student is getting off at? You know, I want him to get off of grandma's house, not my home. We'll have those, we'll have those forms to be filled out that day. We need for you to fill those out, because that'll be really important. So that's another great reason to come. We'll have some paperwork that the district needs for you to fill out. And, but, but you'll get to meet the teacher, and then the teacher's going to come around. We're going to ask that you wear your mask. As the teachers make their round, they'll come to each individual car. They'll ask you if you have any questions, and you'll get to meet them. They'll get to say hello to, to your student, and now their student. And it's just a nice way to kick off school. It's a great way for us to see you. We're, we're going to live stream it. So if you can't join us, you can watch us. And if you can't do any of it, you can replay us too, because we'll, we'll film it. And so it'll be on there, and you can replay us. We're really excited about it. So we're not going to do the other virtual open house. We, we're, we're, we're going to come out of the virtual world into the real world, and we're going to be live and in-person, and that's going to be a, a great day. And, and I hope you'll join us for that, and we'll be sending out the times for that. It'll go all day long. And, and so we're excited. And then our Virtual Academy students, so if you all signed up for Virtual Academy, this will be only for the in-person crew. But if you signed up for the Virtual Academy, your open house will be on the twenty-seventh. So you'll come, very similar format. I, I think we're going to start that one at four-thirty, if I'm not mistaken. So, so the virtual open house. So on the twenty-seventh, all my Virtual Academy students, if you want, come out. Our Virtual Academy teachers will be there, they'll be ready to answer questions. It's going to be a really cool day. So we're excited. We, we heard what you said, you didn't like the virtual open house. We didn't much like it either, and we, we listened to you, and we changed it, and so we feel like this is better.
When will we know our child's teacher for the year?
As soon as I can get everybody registered. I plead it, I'm pleading, and I'm begging, please get registered. The online, I understand some of you didn't want, don't want to do the online. I don't have any choice in that. That's the Kentucky Department of Education, everybody's having to do it. And even if your child has been here for all these years, they still have to fill out the online application. If I can get everybody here, and can get everybody registered, then I can get the, I can see who's virtual and who's in-person, and then we can start. But understand this, in a year like this, the homeroom teacher is not as big of a deal. One, because our school is really departmentalized, so they actually, even in kindergarten, have both teachers. And the other thing is, is that on a hybrid schedule, if seventeen first graders come in, Ms. Christian's going to deal with eight or nine, and Ms. Britt's going to deal with eight or nine. They're going to have those students. It doesn't matter what homeroom they're in, the teachers are going to teach both groups of students. So in, in a hybrid world, in the world we're living in, the truth of the matter is the homeroom teacher, you know, the, the thing that you would want to know is your first grade teachers are Emily Christian and Crystal Britt. Your kindergarten teachers are going to be Karen Jenkins and Beth Williams, and I can go on. But that's really the most important thing, because homerooms is really not going to make a difference.
And even at open house, you'll meet both?
Yeah, you're going to meet all of your teachers, yeah. You're going to meet all the teachers, so you'll get to see everybody.
Um, how will my sped student receive support this year if they stay virtual?
Our sped teachers are going to have their caseload. They're getting in contact with you, should be starting probably this week. They'll be getting in contact with you, if not, the first of next week. And they're, they're going to have learning pods for their virtual students. They're going to have learning communities for their, for their in-person students. And they are going to, to be the ones assigning the lessons online so that they can make sure that your student's receiving their proper modifications and accommodations. And they're going to control all of that. And I think that that's a little different than the system we had last year, because last year we didn't have it built like that. So the sped teachers will have their own Google Classroom, that's where your student will go. And they'll really be able to be in contact, they'll be the ones mentoring, goal-setting. They're going to have their hands on that, the, the progress of your student all year long, and offer that support. So it's going to be a lot better system than what you experienced last year. Although we, we certainly met the needs of our students last year, this is, this is just going to be a little better.
Are Logan County Schools going to try and to offer an affordable internet connection for families like Todd County Schools did? It's not realistic for working families to sit in parking lots for twenty to thirty hours a week and work forty hours.
So do you want to talk about that at all? I know you all have been, I know Mr. Mullins is in contact. He's been trying to work through Bluegrass and Logan Telly. Do you have any updates on where we're at on that?
I know Tyler has been working on that, and Mr. Mullins. I don't think we have anything set in stone yet, but I do think that they are, they are trying to come up with something.
I know that, I know that we're aware of that very much. And I, and in fact, I think it was you maybe that brought it up in a board meeting at one time. But I remember one of the board members bringing up the fact that our students don't, it might have been at the end of last year, we have to figure out a way to get these, the, the people internet. Because those that, that don't have it, there's an issue when you go to online learning.
Yes, and we did, I know Greg Hale from Logan Telephone, you know, we talked to him, and I know he's, you know, trying to do, do some things too. But we did create maybe some hotspots for the kids to go. I do understand, just like the parent said, you know, it's not realistic sometimes for them to go and sit in a parking lot and do that. So I do hope, I, I do look for maybe Tyler to come up with something, and Mr. Mullins to, to help in that area.
Good. And, and I will say that we're offering support here through the, the Saturday schools, through the learning pods, through those things. I, I'll say that the, the churches around have called, and, and they are, you know, they're, they're more than willing to have you there. And, and they're even, some of them are upgrading their, their, their internet service so that they can serve their kids. So it's, there's a lot of people here willing to help. And I think that, you know, we can, we can try to work something out there.
And I know my internet was actually slow too, in which I have Logan Telephone. And I do recommend, if you do have Logan Telephone, when I talked to Greg about it, Greg Hale, he actually sent some people out to our house. And it was some things on our part that we hadn't actually done to maybe speed the internet up. So that was quickly fixed last, you know, like the end of last year. So it may be just something that is within your own home, maybe pulling a little bit more internet than it should. So I do recommend maybe talking to Logan Telephone and seeing if maybe there is something, you know, in your home that you can correct yourself that would help that area.
Yeah, good.
Will kindergarten students have Chromebooks? And also, when they get to return to school, will they have to social distance themselves, such as sitting at separate tables away from other children? Or will they get to sit with friends?
We're, we're, I think, and I, in my board presentation last night, I said, one of the most important things to me, we, we talk about all the academic stuff. And we talk about all the safety stuff. But we don't talk very much about these kids getting the socialization, and the kids getting a return to being normal, just a normal experience. And so I, in my opinion, that has to be on the, on the forefront of what's going on. So to answer your question, when we return, another great advantage of the hybrid is we have less kids. And so we are able to spread out more. And, and so they can work in groups, but still keep some distance. But we plan to have them working in groups, we're going to do it in a safe way. But we plan to have them working in groups, and we plan to provide social time for them and time that they can just be kids and enjoy one another's company. And that time, that's, normalcy is a good thing in a lot of ways at times. And, and we have to get, we have to return to that. You know, you, you look at the, the Center for Pediatrics talking about how important it is to get students back in school because of the socialization and, and them having a routine and those things. We understand that's important, and we're going to do everything we can to make it as normal as possible. And, and, and allow them to be kids a little bit, and just enjoy that time with one another.
I know you talked to me like you were going to let them go outside and still play.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, they're still going to have a lot of, you know, not a lot of free time, but I mean, like you said.
Yeah, we're, and, and we were talking the other day, and, and I'll say this, you come, you come by an awful lot. We talk a lot. And so, you know, we were talking the other day about the importance of making sure that students are going outside and that they're still getting, getting that time for recess. And, you know, although the, the playground equipment's closed, there's other things we can do. And, and that we, we play little fun games in the rooms, and we have, you know, even when we're working, that we have group work and, and things that they find enjoyable. So I, I really believe that, I, I really believe that's the way education should be all the time. But in this time, I think it's a necessity that education's like that, because at the end of the day, their social and emotional health is probably my biggest concern of, of any of this pandemic, to be honest with you.
Do virtual students need the same supplies as the in-person students? And if they require different supplies, when will those lists be available?
I talked to our virtual teachers about that. The virtual teachers feel like that, you know, beyond the normal pads of paper and pencil and that stuff, there will be projects where there'll be some supplies needed, but it'll be supplies you can get at Walmart, and you'll have plenty of time to get those. And they'll send out that list and stuff. But there's no need to just go out and buy a bunch of supplies for virtual students.
Is there a student fee this year?
There is a, from my knowledge, I don't think we've done away with the student fees, have we?
No.
I don't, I don't think through the board. That would be a, the, that would be a board, the, the board would have had a vote on that. I don't, I don't think anything's come up on that, to be honest with you.
It hasn't, that may be a phone a friend, you know? Mr. Mullins said, if you need to, we can call a friend and ask him. But that'll be something, no, we have not discussed, so.
I, I think the fee, as, as, as best I know, the fee is twenty-six dollars. And I'm sure, that's a great question, and I, I promise you, one of us will be calling Mr. Mullins to find out, make sure that that's an accurate answer. But as far as I know, we've had so much stuff going on that I don't, I don't think anybody's really thought about the fee. But as the, as of right now, I, I don't think the fee's been done away with.
When is iReady testing?
It will be, this is, if iReady for the in-person students, it will be during their Learning Community Day. If you cannot participate in Learning Community Day, we will set up a special time and appointment for you to come in and take that test. Ms. Lucas will be contacting the virtual students to set up learning pods. If you cannot participate or don't want to participate in a learning pod, then your test, she will set up, during that phone call, she'll set an appointment up for you to come in and take that iReady test.
Will Logan County High School have a football season? And will middle school football players still be able to ride the bus to practice?
All right, Ms., that's a, that's, that's a, I'll leave you.
That's a hard question too. I was actually asked that today, you know? But we haven't really, I know some sports are practicing right now. And we want, I mean, we want sports to go on as long as we can. And we really haven't discussed that either.
I, I will say this, that the KHSAA Board of Directors and the Commissioner of the KHSAA will be the one making the ruling on whether football can go or football cannot go. And right now, whatever phase they're in, phase three of the reopening is where they're at. And so they would have to, you know, football is considered a high-contact sport for obviously, for obvious reasons. And basketball, the same way. Baseball's a low-contact, so they look at that, you know? And, and they'll make a decision. The Board of Directors and the KHSAA, Julian Tackett, will make a decision as to when they feel like it's safe to return to sports and, and, and have a season and that kind of stuff. At this point, they are still moving in that direction. I know they want that to happen, but I'm, I'm sure that they're working with the governor's office to, to look at the numbers and, and determine whether that's a safe thing to do or not. If, if the middle school students, if we have a football season and those things, and we're returned to hybrid and all that, there will be nothing changed in terms of students being able to ride the bus to the, to the high school. If, if that is, if that, if that, if that happens. Or to the least of my knowledge, I would think that if we're going to have a middle school football season, and we got middle school students here, we do have to look at bus capacity. But the great thing is, on a hybrid schedule, certainly when we were going all in-person, this would have changed, this would have been a little change. But now that we're on hybrid, we may have a little extra room on that bus to be able to, to accommodate that. But, but we'll, we'll, we'll work through that. We certainly understand that middle school students need to be able to ride the bus or get some transportation to practice. But, so we'll work through that. The hybrid gives us a little more flexibility. I can tell you, if we're all in-person, that, that flexibility is probably not there. We probably can't do that, because we don't have the room on the bus.
Will iPad support the programs for virtual learning? If the clever app is installed on the iPad, will my student be able to pull up the programs and do their work?
To my knowledge, yes. To my knowledge, yes. I think iPads will support everything that we need. It, it might be a little harder to type on and different things like that. If you had a keyboard with your iPad, it might be a little easier. But the iPad should support everything that we are, are doing here.
If there was a hybrid option all year long, I might choose that over Virtual Academy. I understand that it's a guess, but could that be all year?
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I think, and I don't want to speak over what the board is going to vote. I, I don't, I don't vote that, but I would think that with the numbers and, and we're looking at that, it, it's very possible that, and I'll let you talk.
Yes, I, I do. I really think it could be possible. Like I said, we'll just have to be monitoring the numbers and see what our percentage rate is. And, I mean, our goal is to get our kids back in the school. And if hybrid is the only way we can, we may have to do it longer than the two weeks. Time will tell.
Yeah.
Um, we might want to talk about, we don't have any more questions right now.
Okay.
But we might want to revisit the breakfast and lunch plan, and how, what they need to do to do that.
Yeah, we will be putting out on, on, we will be putting out on social media tomorrow a, a Google form that you'll need to fill out to request meals. So if you are in the Virtual Academy, or at this point, a virtual student, because we're all on virtual, you will need to request those meals through this Google form. And even on the hybrid model, you're still going to have to fill out the Google form, because there's days, the days that you're not here. So what that'll look like is on Monday, so let's say you're an A B student, on Monday- So what that'll look like is on Monday, so let's say you're an A/B student, on Monday you would get food to go home for Tuesday, on Wednesday you get food to go home for Thursday and Friday. So that's, that's kind of how that would work for our hybrid students. On our virtual students, there'll be one time a week that you will, you'll come pick up the food. That is going to be at about three forty-five, it'll be after school one day. We're looking at maybe a Wednesday or Thursday after school and it'll be three forty-five, it'll be back in the back parking lot where we do the car rider pickup in the afternoons and you'll swing around there and you'll get your food that way once we get to the twenty-sixth. Yes, you do, you do have to have an ID because the federal program and the waiver that we all think has run out and so now you have to be a student, a Logan County Lewisburg student and a guardian and you have to show that ID to get that food. If there's no other questions, well, I tell you, as always, we really enjoy you all, we enjoy these, these online and live Facebook sessions. We're going to continue to do it and as long as you've got questions and you're tuning in, we're going to continue to do it. We'll bring in guests every so often. We really appreciate Teresa Hendricks being here and taking time out of her day to come and join us and I appreciate Darren Waldo producing and Kristi Lucas being our question and our moderator. So thank you all, hey, stay safe, have a great night and we'll see you soon. Thank you.